... meeting to order if I could just everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. So tonight we have two board members who are rightfully virtual participating for our meeting tonight, secondary to local emergency orders. So those four members are the event to state their name and their location as we have in the past as we call the roll.
I think Steve did the same thing. I think he went to the other one because he dropped off too, just like John.
Okay, I will call the roll. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Here.
Mr. Richards?
Here.
Mr. Moses?
Here.
Mr. Burke Myers here. Mr. Daru?
Here, entering Ohio.
Okay, thank you. And is Mr. Middlestat joining? We do know Mr. Middlestat tends to join and he is in New Baltimore, Michigan.
He might be back on.
Mr. Middlestat, are you there for attendance?
Here.
And where are you located?
New Baltimore.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I will entertain a motion at this point. As part of our superintendent search, the board will go into closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act to review superintendent candidates from our posting. So do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion with Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. Moses. Can we... Mr. Middlestat, are you able to call the roll?
Yep. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Burke Myers?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Boo?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Your vote cut off, Mr. Middlestat?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this point, 5:43, the board is going to go into closed session to review our candidates. And we will... we'd be returning to determine our candidates to interview. We plan to discuss first round interviews in next half, and then there is an open forum, and then there's a planned two-way journey. Thank you. Okay, it is 7:19, and we are going to return from closed session. Do I have a motion to return to open sessions?
So move.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Green, seconded by Ms. Knox. Can we call the roll?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Mr. Burke Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yeah.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Boo?
I believe that was a yes.
Yes. Middlestat, yes.
There.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we return to open session. So next order of business, so the board brings the means, and we will determine, kind of go round robin to determine which board candidates each board member is interested in interviewing. What we're going to do is Mr. Silvery is going to keep tally for us, and hopefully at the end of our round robin we will have a consensus of at least a few candidates that we will hit go forward likely with interviewing. And then if there's any more discussion amongst the board to try and add or delete any of those members, we will have that. Okay, so we'll start with Mr. Moses. If you could please refer to your candidates by the letter designation.
I picked the letter A, letter C, letter H, letter J, and letter L.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Richards?
I picked the letter A, letter C, letter G, letter H, and letter M.
Thank you. Ms. Knox?
I picked A, B, C, G, and H.
Thank you. I will do my own. I have chose A, B, H, M, C. And Mr. Green?
I would like to speak further to candidate A, B, C, D, and H.
Thank you. Mr. Daru?
I got A, B, H, and J.
Thank you. And Mr. Middlestat?
I've got B, C, H.
Was that B, C, H?
Yes.
Sorry, you're breaking up still.
E.
I apologize. One more time, B.
B, C, H.
Thank you.
And here.
Okay.
Talk into the mic a little bit.
Okay, let's get it. Six for letter A, six for letter C, seven for B, five for B. Those are the only four where I'm going to do it. And others, two for J, two for G, two for M, one for L, one for B. Four candidates in the area is according to the board already requested for a part of A, B, C.
So I'll make a motion that we interview the top four, A, B, C, and H.
Okay, so there's a motion for Mr. Middlestat to interview the top four candidates, being candidate A, B, C, and H. Is there a second for that motion?
We discuss this.
We would need a second to put it on the floor.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Moses. Now there's discussion, and I just remind members to please maintain confidentiality through your discussion.
There's one more person on the floor.
So, Mr. Silvery, I want to clarify. We had two votes from the board for G as in George, J as in John, and M as in Michael.
Yeah. What... I didn't... I couldn't hear Mr. Moses. Can you... But Lisa, I can hear you clear as day, so can you kind of... What did he say?
My correction if I do something. But he just said he would like the board to possibly reconsider candidate J. He just feels a little more compelled by that candidate.
Yep, I wanted to speak on the same person that... that J, I, you know, if we're, you know, if we can add another guy or two, or girl, or whatever, but I'd like to interview J as well, if the board...
Mr. Man... Madam Chair, I'm willing to amend my motion to include candidate J.
I'll support it.
Okay, so the motion was amended to now include candidate J. So we would have A, B, C, H, and J. Mr. Moses supports that. Is there any further discussion or comment or concern by a board member? I'm just kind of looking for eye contact here. Okay, to move forward. All right, why don't we call the roll for the motion to interview A, B, C, H, and J?
Mr. Middlestat, yes. Mr. Moses?
I believe that was asking.
That's my...
Ms. Burke Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Green? I broke up. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Daru?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes, and the board... Mr. Silvery will be contacting those to set up interviews for next week. The board is planning interviews on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and likely reconvening Friday for another consensus of moving forward.
So I can go again for public record of your names and the position of the five candidates selected. Tom Didland, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services in Central School. John Dean, who is Deputy Superintendent of Education Services for Central School. Philip Janikowski, Assistant Superintendent of Non-Meadow and Mary's. Kenneth Weaver, Deputy Superintendent of Political Instruction for Oxford Community School. Jim Hattler, Deputy Principal of Royal College of Medical Sciences and Royal College of Medicine.
Thank you. All right, moving on. So the next is the discussion, our next steps, how we are going to proceed. Mr. Silvery is going to kind of guide us through what comes next for these meetings for us and for the fellow.
So we have scheduled, we have heard previously, first round interviews will take place Tuesday at 1:00. We have heard previously.
I don't... Lisa, I don't know if it's the same for the rest of the people, but he's so far away from the speaker. I know I can't hear him. I don't know about you, Mr. Middlestat.
No, I can't hear you.
Okay, so I'm going to assume that the rest of the parents on this can't as well.
Thank you.
I think we're getting a lot of echo from the auditorium system.
Okay.
If it's possible, if he's going to be doing a lot of talk and maybe it comes, you know, separated but a little bit by you.
If you're comfortable taking my mic, we're going to give him a personal microphone so he can speak a little bit clearer.
And maybe if everybody else is not speaking.
Okay.
That's worse.
It's worse.
Yeah, Patrick's was the best one.
It's got nothing to do with my voice.
I know. It seems like your mic's the best one, though, Mike.
My mic on, you can hear me.
Are you possibly able to come closer to the camera?
I have a different voice. I did my own voice. You do that.
We need your outside voice, sir. You know, you have one.
This is everything else.
To the right. There we go.
All right, we're going to try it again.
Yeah. Oh, we're good.
It's good.
Yeah, just maintain your tone louder than you think you need to.
All right, I will do that. I'll use my own principal voice for Jeff. So I get my phone back up here again. All right, so interviews next week, and we have scheduled at the start at 5:30. Okay, you're right. So what we would typically do is, my suggestion is to publish them once we get all of the candidates in our schedule, just starting at 5:00. We schedule up to 90 minutes per interview. Candidates don't always take the full 90 minutes. So what I would suggest is you probably want to take about a 10-minute break in between. Rather than having a fixed time for the second one, we'll just schedule two interviews starting at 5:30. First one will be up to 90 minutes. Whenever it ends, take a 10-minute break, and after a 10-minute break, start the second one. I'll have a second candidate correct to be here early in the morning. If their first interview ends earlier than we anticipated, the second person will be onsite and ready to jump in and start whenever you're ready. Make sense?
Yes.
So two interviews per night. We'll need to talk about, I can work with your folks to do this, an opportunity for your stakeholders to provide feedback. So we have forums that we can just duplicate and have on hand for anybody who's in person. But if you do, I don't know if you will, have people participating virtually doing this.
Yes.
If you do, then we'll probably want to create some type of a link for people to go to that and provide feedback to them. So that anybody who wants on the interview has the opportunity to provide feedback to you, and it comes really very simple questions. What is... what is it about the candidate? Have they heard the interview? That impresses you? What is it that you may... what is it that you certain people are seeing? And are there still questions that are unanswered to you that you would like to know more about? So people have a chance to provide that feedback to you. It's not their decision, it's not a platform of help, right, but it's helpful for you to... it's one piece of information additional for you to consider as you take out the responsibility of making decisions. So we'll make arrangements to make sure we're ready to collect that feedback. Beyond that, we also obviously are going to have questions that we need to utilize. So I'm going to ask you now in your binders that I just gave you this evening, turn the tab over. So we have sample interview questions. You have the option of using... if all of the questions come from here, and normally in first round interviews, we have 21 or 24 questions. They can all come from the questions that you see here, but you would also have the opportunity to submit alternatives. I'm not going to give you the out loud, given the way you asked the question, out loud and publicly. But after the meeting, and you don't have a lot of time for this third break, because we're going to be done here on Tuesday, what I'll do with that time is stay out there. Five sets of interview questions for you, one for each of the candidates. They'll all be identical. But you have five sets, and I give you lots of room for details, so maybe anything else. So on the end of time and prep for those, I would ask if you're going to have any suggestions behind these that you really try to give them to. But I ask because there's something I need to... So I always ask that board members submit their suggestions to the board president. If I could ask you to do that by Sunday, Sunday afternoon, and then President Burke Myers asked if I can have a Sunday evening, if you can give me any direction, provide some changes, then allow me to have time to get it right, and to have some more ideas. What I want to do now is identify questions that you see here that we would fall back on. We can see opening questions, and then you see headings from other groups of questions. Normally what we'll do is the board president makes the introductory remarks and asks opening questions. And then by assigning category to each of the other board members, it really doesn't matter. I'm just assigning a category, and then you would ask us three questions from that category. And then again, suggestions we can... For now, all I want to do is make sure we select the three questions in each category. So opening questions for the moment are set because there are just... Under district relations, you see four questions that... and we don't want to take questions aloud by number. Which one of those four, in your group, do you believe is... I have to make sure that that was clear. Any suggestions? Do you want to pick out the district relation? Why don't you choose three or four? I have some questions too. I think everyone gets to completely figure out. Thank you.
You'll have to speak on mic.
I can repeat what he says. I think one and three are kind of... Okay, you have a preference? I would agree.
Yeah.
I would say you suggested we eliminate three. Any... I want the rest of your...
I would agree with eliminating number three, it is redundant.
Okay.
For everybody else.
Not making any objections, so we'll roll with that. All right, political awareness, same deal. We want to eliminate one. What do you think, two years ago?
I have some questions.
I'm sorry, you can support it. Any objection?
What is number three?
I didn't quite hear that.
What does number three?
What is the SS?
Oh, the... every student's... Federal legislation.
No, I understand that, but...
I hear you suggesting we eliminate that one.
That's what... I guess I'm wondering if the answer to that question, whether how it fits understanding their political awareness, other than them knowing what that means.
You tell me. So we have two questions you just... You're two or three.
I would support getting rid of number three as well. If that's where you're going, Mr. Middlestat.
Yeah, I just... asking the question, I don't know what benefit. I really get a lot out of that, other than them being able to figure out what that really means specifically, but...
I'm all for knocking off three and four.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
In case that might have been how we informed.
For now, we're going to eliminate one, and then when you submit suggestions to Lisa after this, by Sunday, if you want to suggest an alternative question to replace number four as well, by all means, you can do that. For now, we'll say we're going to eliminate three. Next grouping, leadership interviews, you're going to need to eliminate two.
I think we could eliminate one. It's kind of... I think that'll be answered later on.
Okay. Okay.
I guess. To me, I would like to actually keep all four of those questions. I feel like they're pertinent for our district. I think someone at the hospital would do that. You have suggestions?
I mean.
Someone somewhere else if there's work to do that.
We really don't need to, but I said before, if, if you were to keep. But I indicated before you would probably within the time. You can find maybe between three or four at the most, so. If the suggestion is keep all four of the remaining ones.
I, I would support you there, Mr. Burkhire.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you. So let's move on to instruction and curriculum. And since there are seven now, let's look at this video for. Read, we want to even, I would invite you to the same thing, if you feel with no. Hang on for those considering. On board that top of the case, basically.
I, I guess I feel like number one of the section kind of ties back to number two above and I feel like it's redundant.
Okay, all right, so. Press through number one, we're now, it narrows the focus of the stakes.
I really like both five and six.
Or do you like keeping five hands?
I would like to take three.
Okay. So we've had. It suggested we read five steps. Or that as well. Are there any others that you feel are, or. Strong that you feel like they should be first as well? Three, five, six, yes.
All right, I would support those as well.
Not hearing any objections, so.
Just want to make sure with, uh, Mr. Mills, that Mr. Giroux is still here, I guess, okay?
Yep. I'm good with that.
Mr. Giroux, I think you're muted.
Sorry, I, yeah, I'm, I'm hearing you guys and, uh.
All right.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, your finances. Well, I would leave that, leave it free.
We feel that that's not usually.
I, on the finances, I, I like all four questions.
So great, so I'm hearing you supporting people for.
Yep, I agree.
One, I guess, all right. We're going to hang on for those understaffed personnel. For one of these that you would like to get with it.
I, I actually do like all of my votes as well.
I would, I would agree with three or four, I'm good. Mr. Richards.
Okay. I, I believe that leaves us with twenty-four questions at the moment, which is about a second. So again, just know, once you have a chance to kind of walk away from this, we're hoping to speak about this. If there are questions that you think are important enough, it should be good and it could be something specific. Um, the thing I'd ask him, he would get a suggestion, and that suggestion is the President Burkhire by Sunday. It might be helpful if a lot of what you're suggesting, we would also. Here's a question that I'd like to eliminate, place it with this one, oh, I don't get. Get your suggestions to burn and you would want to know that by Sunday evening. And we'll have this ready for you, binder, another binder, for any candidates on Tuesday. Five sets of ready, lots of repronounced and I urge you. Take a lot of hours to reflect back and now you're.
So I'm sorry, you feel like twenty-four is about the max, so. If several questions are submitted, Mr. Burkhire, you feel like we should circle back through and eliminate some?
I know, if I do think so, I think to stay within the ninety minutes. Get much faster, it's maybe making it difficult possibly for some of the candidates. I mean, honestly, I've seen anything from. People finishing in forty-five minutes, which was extreme, I've only seen that once. When they head up to ninety, and I've seen people who merge across one or one face. Um, one candidate has said that all literally it was impossible to get through all the questions. So it's so dependent on the candidates, but. From experience, I'm saying that I find if you move best twenty-four, you probably will be questioned.
And I trust you'll be the bouncer of the interviews and see people up as you see fit.
Actually, that falls to the board president, that's actually in the opening remarks, so, um. What we would designate because of kind of where everybody's going to be sitting and I don't know this is going to. My mindset would be, because I'm a human person. I kind of stick with the board president and say. Now, only so much time, you better hurry up around you. Either you may want to do that, or you may want to designate one of the tops. And I can say when you get to where there's maybe twenty, twenty-five minutes left. If it's what can I see, the reminder would be, for example. We have twenty minutes remaining and we still have this many questions, we also want to review this question. So we'll probably need to pick other things. We don't have to do that a lot, but everyone's a lot. I do let the candidates know in advance how many questions have been asked. Let them know how much time they're, 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 then. Pace themselves as they need to, so if you were to say, for example, that that. Say a cell phone. They're not checking their texts or, or Facebook or anything else, maybe using this kind of their own time. So they can monitor themselves. All right, so we will then, um, Thursday, it will be just one interview. Like two on, on Tuesday, two on Monday, one on Thursday. But what we will do then on Thursday, after the second interview, is we'll talk like this again. And we'll talk a little bit about what is Friday going to look like in terms of how you're going to go about making your decisions. About how to narrow the fields from these five. Hopefully not too, again, the question sometimes is, does it happen to you? Does it happen to you? Um, it's like a deal. Hopefully you would, if you felt compelled, if you just, we had a good more rep people here then. Could you do that, that you could?
On here, you have audience questions in ten minutes, that's a cool.
Personally, my advice is that you don't throw out that. Two is, one, it differentiates the areas too much because, yeah. You get somebody to finish early and you can take a lot of questions from the audience. Um, you could have somebody take the full ninety, but there's zero questions. I mean, really, the perk is that every, every candidate. Is exactly the same question, exactly the same order, or exactly the same person. So it's a totally level playing and when you're comparing that to everyone. Um, so we might say this, but what we could do is based on the feedback that you get from people who are listening to the first. Remember, one of the things we ask is, are there still some questions that you have remaining about this candidate? So you may get some good suggestions, maybe that in the first round. That you can use in the second round. In the second round, we do allow for a bit of differentiation, so. If you like most of the questions to be the same, but if there's a handful that might be specific to that particular candidate. Um, you can do that as well. Any other questions that you got, I, I do want to convince you last week. Totally clear on exactly what this is going to look like and how it's going to look. I will tell you this now, we'll talk about it again, so on Friday. I would advise that we do much the same, just like we did tonight. Each of the seven, maybe, if you can say. Having heard everything you did in the first round, scared everything that we know. I would like to see it advanced by name. These two candidates, so it's that. Here for each of you to represent the flies. Right, so any other questions about that? If you go to tab five. Everybody with Mr. Richards, yes, it's. Checklist and do's and don'ts. Hopefully you do that. We don't need to go through this now, I would just root you on your own degrees. Take the time, it's not lengthy, but it'll be through there. Just to be prepped and really, it's advice that will keep you out of trouble and. We want to conduct this as professionally as possible and kind of huge. But honestly, what keeps you out of trouble for the most part is, if I think anybody gave you, everything is totally scripted up. Stick to the script. Beyond that, I don't know that there's anything else at the moment that we necessarily need to discuss as you ready for next week. But I, I, I have a question that I have. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Silveria.
John, do you want to take these back and? You can do, you need to do with them and give them back to us at the end of the meeting? I did some writing notes of mine, so I wrote my name on it.
Okay, if you have any notes.
Okay, while we're collecting those, I'm going to move on to open forum. So at this point, the public provided the comment items at the agenda. Those who wish to participate in the open forum need to fill out their request. Stating their name, address, and the agenda items to address. Of course, tonight we will be allowing virtual participation for the forum. Um, comments about public employee should be directed to them personally and should not be included in this public forum. Um, I do know of one individual that wanted to speak virtually, Chris Forte. Mr. Sizemore is setting that up.
And please send the camera back as well to, to the President Donald Trump.
Okay, I'm unmuted, are we good?
Yes.
Okay, um, just maybe two questions. Um, one is with the five candidates that you're going to interview, um. At this point. How many candidates did we have apply? Is that something you can answer?
Yes.
Burke Meyer, maybe?
Yes, I believe that is a good question, I believe it looks twenty, twenty-three, we had twenty-three candidates apply.
Okay, so if we get through, uh, or that we, you guys get through these five candidates and say. Decide none of them are. Good enough, for lack of a better word. Um, are the candidates that were not chosen tonight. Told at this point, sorry for your luck, or you know what I'm asking? Versus, uh. Kind of holding off on that at this point, just in case you need a backup plan?
I believe, you know, Mr. Silveria indicated to, to the board previously that.
Okay.
Would be indicated, uh, they would be contacted tonight or tomorrow, um, set up those interviews if they're moving on. Um, so certainly, um, if the candidate is not getting called, they could assume they're not moving on at this point. I mean, if we were to reach through to our interviews next week and decide that we had to return to the drawing board altogether. We certainly, that's our right, um, but we would, you know, then obviously, yes, we could kind of circle back and. Well, that, we, we have that right, um, because they are still, they were still candidates.
Okay, that's what I thought, uh, and then one question, and I know it's not on the agenda. Um, with the canceled meeting from Wednesday, there's still plans to reschedule that, or are we just going to wait for the next one next month?
Wednesday's meeting was a curriculum meeting, um.
Correct.
Largely, that information, um, that was going to be presented was, um, student achievement and district activities. Um, so at this point, because we already had to go forward with.
With all of this.
Meetings next week for the interviews that were planned, um, following week, we have a regular scheduled four meetings, so. You could likely plan that it will be traditional and length, um, to accommodate that.
Gotcha. Okay, fair enough, that's all I got, thank you. And good luck with the interviews.
And I don't see any submissions, but I didn't get any submissions for in-house comments, are there any other online?
Jay, you can be drawn.
Um, Ms. Petron.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you possibly repeat the names of the candidates you selected? It was very difficult to hear that. Um. At home.
Sure. So we had Todd Bickler, um, the Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services from Bloomfield Health Schools in Bloomfield, Michigan. Um, Michael John Dean, the Deputy Superintendent for Educational Services from Rose Point Public Schools. Philip Jankowski, the Assistant Superintendent of our meta-area schools. Kenneth Weaver, the Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction Oxford Community Schools. And Patrick Adams, Principal of Roseville High School, Roseville Community Schools. Those were the five. Um, Ms. Petron, did you have any further question, comment?
She muted or something.
Okay, I'm going to assume no, raise your hand again. I believe that is all, um, so at this time, we will take a motion to adjourn.
Moving.
Okay, uh, motion by Mr. Green to adjourn the meeting at eight oh five, seconded by Mr. Giroux, follow the rule, please.
I have a question or a comment?
Uh, we have a motion on the floor.
Right, but I made a comment, correct? No, my only, this guy, before we, I wanted to mention that we probably should do a rehearsal. On the, the audio and the vi- video, because it's kind of been scrambled up today that when we do the actual interviews that are in public. Then we have a better system, or at least we'd be. Then we have a better system, or at least we rehearsed it such that we have a good system that people can hear.
So we had Ms. Pete Ron, I could discuss this before your awareness, before the meeting. Because of her participation, for board members who will be virtual. The tentative plan, and I will ask her to maybe take a run through this in a mock way. Is that the board members who are here in person are actually going to be seated and spaced out in the audience in the first row or two. And the candidate is going to be on the stage. And of course, they're going to likely have a flexi lap around them, so that. If they're comfortable, they can remove their mask, because they won't have anybody within six feet or further from them. So hopefully that will allow the candidate to be extremely clear. And like I said, so then, and then yourselves, we. If you're virtual, we will have a screen pulled out, of course, for any board members who are virtual. But I will ask her, maybe they can test that one time before we come. So that we can just ensure it's a little bit, a little bit more clear.
Yeah, I just. I understand that. I just think we should just make sure we rehearse it so that it works out, because in theory, it seems okay, but.
Right.
Anyway. All right. So I'll do the roll. Mr. Green. For German.
Yes, you can call the roll for German.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Burke Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Cox, I mean. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestead, yes.
Thank you. Meeting has just learned excellent ATO stuff. And so as we indicated, we will be back here on Tuesday morning at five thirty. Thank you.